Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I like to call the meeting its order. And Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlofs.
Here.
Maringa.
Here.
Nordeh.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Trus.
Here.
Vanderwal.
Here.
And Mayor Moss.
Here. I will be giving the invocation tonight, so for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, then we're going to follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. God, we thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you, you've made such a beautiful world for us to live in and to enjoy. And thank you, too, that we live in a part of the world where we have such incredible freedom. And even to have a meeting like tonight, we are just very grateful for that. And thank you for all the men and women who work for the city, who volunteer here, who help make this a better place. And I pray that you all let them know how much they're appreciated and how much of a difference they're making in many, many people's lives. So tonight, I ask you to give us wisdom in every decision that we make, that it will all be done for the common good. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all. Just wanted to welcome Brittany here tonight. It's nice to see you taking Mercy's place. Glad to have you. And thank you for what you do every day in the court of justice. You have before you tonight's agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of the support.
And support, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, January 23, so what, three weeks ago? And you've had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Some move.
Motion, approve, and support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. And tonight, Dennis, we have kind of a hefty amount of bills tonight, but it has been three weeks, so.
Yeah, it's true.
In the amount of $530,000. Anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions?
That's easy.
Okay. Council, any questions for Dennis or Jane, Finance Director, or anybody else about the bills? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $530,966.47?
Some move.
Support. Motion and support. Comments, questions? If not, Brittany, would you call the roll? Or, yeah, call the roll, please. Yeah, motion. I thought we did.
Yeah, motion and support.
Motion and support.
Yep. Maringa.
Yes.
Nordeh.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trus.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
And Gelderlofs.
Yes.
And Moss. Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes, absolutely. Those bills pay great for the unhappy vendors tomorrow, otherwise, and it would be very dark in here, so. Time for public comment. Anybody like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, so Brittany can communicate if she needs to later, and just tell us what you're thinking about. Kyla, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kyla Boss, 3273 Fayette, Granville. And I am here tonight to talk to you about the city tree sale and what it would be. I'm going to kind of read this, because my printer didn't seem to want to print it off, so. The Granville City Tree Sale is a program to support the residential tree planting in the city of Granville, providing a 50-50 cost share of containerized trees in the spring. The city encourages residents to plant trees whenever possible to increase the tree canopy to help improve air and water quality and possibly reduce entry costs for the homeowner. The Granville City Trees Sale for 2023 season would launch March 1, and it would be a Shopify store where people could see what their tree would look like as it matured and what type of an area that it would be planted in, because you always want to plant the right tree in the right place. And in order to participate, you've got to be a resident of the city of Granville, and you would need to verify that on the maps. And they would incur the cost if they weren't part of the city and they ordered off of our site. The trees would be delivered one week prior to Arbor Day so that we could actually participate in a citywide Arbor Day celebration with residents planting trees on their own property. So our ask for tonight is to get approval to be able to go forward with this so that we can actually get trees up on a site for everyone to purchase. And we're asking the city to do a maximum of $5,000. The tree sale would run from March 1 to March 31, or whenever the funding was met, because our limit would be 50-50 cost of $5,000 for the city. The other cities that have done this have never, ever reached their $5,000 yet, and they've done it for several years. So it just depends on the advertising and the commitment within the residents as to how much you would actually end up spending for that 50-50 cost. And I'm open to questions.
I've got a question. So the Shopify store, you can see what your tree's going to look like in five or ten? That's very cool.
Well, what I would do is I would post pictures. I would get some ideas of like, see if I can get pictures of what they look like right now, because I, we pretty much have determined that we're going to go through West Olive Nursery, because they offer a more diverse selection. And that way, there might be trees as reasonable as $30 and as expensive as $150, so that it would provide an opportunity for a lot more people to participate. And so I would post a picture of like, if it was a crab apple tree, a full-grown crab apple tree with like, if it was the pink flowering one, and what diseases it might be susceptible to, and how large it might get, so that you get an idea, so that you wouldn't just be ordering something blindly and then have like this great big shade tree right next to your house or something.
That's a great idea. You know, I remember many years ago, the Department of Public Works had container trees.
Oh, definitely.
Pine trees. And I put one next to my house, and now I look at it, it's probably 30 feet tall, and I think, yeah, it kind of seems, trees seem to grow slowly, but you know.
It's quicker than you think.
Yeah, it really is. So this would be then, people planting on their own property, right? Because Tree Board, there's not a lot of places in the public right of way that it wouldn't interfere with utilities and so on, so.
Right. We actually mapped the gas services out in the city of Granville, and we're still working on underground electric, but almost all the south side of the street has a gas service on it. And then the north side has electric service, and the same with the east to west. And so there are a few spots here and there, and you just, we can still plant along the streets, but we have to be very selective about what locations. It's not quite like when we first came together, we wanted all the streets lined with trees through Granville, and I think we realigned that thought process.
Anybody? JR?
Yeah. Yeah, and so you buy a tree for 30 or 50 or $150. Is there going to be anybody to like, kind of like guide you to where you should or shouldn't plant this tree in your yard?
Well, and that's, maybe we'll find that we should hold a class so people can come in and help select the tree. That can be done at the library. We held a pruning class there last week. But I would also like to be a resource for anybody that was interested. There's a great resource on iTree where you can actually pick out one of the trees off of our site and put it in your yard, and it'll tell you how many dollars in utilities you'll save and things like that. And you can kind of move that tree around. It's kind of fun.
I mean, if we sell $5,000 worth of trees and your name's attached to it, I just don't want your phone to be going bananas, everyone asking you where to.
Kind of crazy.
Plant their trees, but I'm sure you would relish in that opportunity. So I guess I just want to like, look at logistics before we decide, you know. I mean, I would love to buy a couple of trees, but I just don't know where to put them that's appropriate.
Right, and maybe, maybe that's a good thing, because I've thought of that, too. Maybe like on a Saturday morning, like invite people that are interested in buying, maybe the first week that the site's up, to come in and speak with myself and some other people that actually can guide them. I'd be more than willing to do something like that.
Are you seeking the $5,000 from the city tonight, or has that been approved?
It would be at the end of the tree sale. And how it would work is, the tree project is actually going to put the site up. This is a collaboration between the city of Granville, the City Tree Board, and the Granville Community Tree Project. And so the project would serve as the source to be able to put the store up and to field the questions, hold classes and things like that. At the end of, when we reach the $5,000, if we'd happen to max out, then we will stop the sale, and it won't be until we go to pick the trees up that we would need a check, and they will pay the check directly to the nursery. Because as a municipality, you wouldn't give money to a nonprofit.
Any other questions for Kyla? So are you looking just not for a formal vote tonight, or you are for?
I kind of was looking for an approval so that I could build the store, because I don't want to go ahead. And if we wait till the next council meeting, it's going to be pretty tight to get the store up and get people aware of what we're doing. That's what I was asking for, is an approval to go forward with this.
Dennis, do you see any issues with?
No. The only issue that Jane and I had, we discussed with Kyla last Friday, and that is how the payment would work, that the city has to pay the provider directly. There can't be funds transferred to another third entity and then count on that. And then we also need detailed invoices on those. Did I cover all that right, Jane?
The other thing is, it is not a budgeted expense, and it's $5,000, and so the budgeted expense would have to come back for a little while.
We have a, what is it, the Special Projects Fund that's got money in it?
It does have budgeted items in there already. The trees were not one of them.
Yeah.
For 2023. So doesn't mean that you can't not do something in order to do this, but we really need to figure out what that is.
My question would be, it might not be budgeted, but are there funds in there that would cover the $5,000?
Funds in the Special Project Fund?
Yeah.
I would have to go back and look to see what is on track to be spent out of there this year, and whether or not it's likely that it will still be spent.
Okay.
I think the likelihood of a $5,000 expenditure is pretty slim. So in a sense, I mean, that would be best-case scenario. And a lot of other communities that have done this have not hit that number, so.
It'll miss a lot of trees if you're going from $30 to $150, depending on what gets sold.
Be a great problem.
It would be a great problem.
And to clarify, it's $10,000. The city's paying for 50%, so the project would actually pay for $10,000.
Nope, the residents. The residents will actually pay the 50% on the one end, and the city will pay the other 50%.
Right.
So you have $10,000.
$10,000 worth of trees, yes. And if the council wants to give the green light to this this evening, we can follow up with a potential budget amendment to bring to you if we have to. So Jane and I can bring that back in February and keep the ball rolling to build the shop.
JR?
One last question. I know, Kyla, we've gone over our tree canopy assessment of our whole city. I mean, you're going to build the site to say, don't buy a pear tree because we have a million of them, or do buy X tree because we need more of them and they're less susceptible to disease, right? I mean, we're.
What I would do is look at our recommended trees, and I would avoid putting maples on the sale. And I might include like Japanese maples that would be ornamental or something, but I'm trying to avoid planting pears. We wouldn't have pears on our site, the ornamental ones. When I spoke with the nursery owner, I've worked with them quite a few years ago, and we still, we've purchased some trees from him recently, like over at East, and he was very excited to be able to work with us. And he told me, he said, you know, I got this many trees on the ground already. He's a broker for trees, and so he brings them in. And he, he also, we also need to make sure that we're looking at native trees and native adaptive trees, so that we're not just like picking some things, oh, that looks pretty, you know? So we want to, like, he and I are going to sit down and actually narrow that list down and put it on the store.
Any other questions for Kyla? Otherwise, is there a motion to authorize expenditure of up to $5,000 from the city for the special tree sale in March this year?
Right. And any advertisement or PR that we can do for the city of Granville, this would be a great time to, if you guys want to give me some ideas so that, because this is a great thing, that the city would be willing to give money back to somebody to plant a tree on their property.
I'll make that motion as worded by Steve.
Okay. Thank you.
Support.
And support. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. I like the idea of a class ahead of time.
Okay. I'll get one on the schedule.
Yeah, that would be great. And yeah, just, yeah, I think people would appreciate that, too. We all love trees, but it's like, yeah, until I went to a tree class, I just would dig a hole and put it in and see what happens.
And all those little seedlings everybody got, they grew huge right by their house, but I would like to see all these trees live, if they're going to buy them and plant them.
Appreciate all your work. So we have motion and support. Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Trus.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlofs.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordeh.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Anybody else here like to address the council during public comment? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, tell us what you're thinking about this evening. Last chance, last call. Okay, we'll move on. We have kind of a long consent agenda tonight. A number of reports. We have the fire EMS report, the police annual report, which is excellent, I'd like to talk about that in a little bit. We have the treasurer's January report, the historical commission and library board minutes from January, and the environmental sustainability committee, February 2 meeting minutes, as well as an appointment to the environmental sustainability committee. The application is in there, and there's been a recommendation. Person's name is Mitch.
Mitch, man, he's here tonight?
Oh, great, wonderful. Great, and a lot of experience with Arbor Day and, or Sierra Club and that. We also have an authorization for the summer recreation agreement with the Granville Public Schools. That's worked well over the years. Setting the budget work session for March 20 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. And then we have some miscellaneous purchase orders, so approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city. Cleanwater Plant has a few purchases, the biochemical oxygen demand incubator, the confined space gas detector, and the safety railing, as well as the motor pool, a plow truck. So like I said, approval would be in the best interest of the city. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
Some move.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Just wanted to make one comment, and then we can all chime in. Great annual report, Chief, and well, all the reports were great. What I really appreciated about this one, and maybe it's just I noticed it and I hadn't noticed it before, when we had the outdoor community gathering, the summer of the George Floyd incident, there were questions in there about use of force, lots of questions about use of force. And I see you clearly addressed that, how many times, what that means, the different levels, no uses of deadly force, which is good. And also, you had in there, and I don't know whether it's a new thing, but it caught my eye, was the use of force by race, gender, and age. And that was very helpful, and I think our citizens will really appreciate having that information. That's information they had asked for, and so, thank you. Because I'm sure that takes some time and some doing to pull that all together, so. Any other comments, questions about anything on the consent agenda?
And I don't know if you, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't know if you do this every year, Chief, but I appreciated, in the summary, the SWAT analysis with your entire team, and that's very helpful for us.
JR?
Yeah, I had mentioned to Dennis, actually, prior to his arrival, that I do have a personal conflict with March 20. I can make up the budget session with him and Jane as well, but if there's anybody else who has a conflict with that date, maybe now's the time to talk about it. Otherwise, I will make up that review with them.
Actually, I do, too, come to think of it. Did we originally have it set for the 13th of that month as well?
I don't know.
No, it was the 20th.
So I know the 13th is our council meeting, the 20th would be in between council meetings. And I mean, I knew I was going to be gone, you know, Q3 of last year, so I just wanted to set that out there if anybody else has a.
Okay.
Randy's going back to Florida again. If he's leaving. So just food for thought.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have a conflict on the 20th, March?
You good?
It's possible that Dennis and I could meet with the two of you prior to the meeting and bring your comments of questions to the budget meeting.
Okay.
That is an option.
We'll make it work. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? Okay. Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlofs.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordeh.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trus.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Dennis, City Manager's Report.
First thing on the agenda under the manager's report is a bid of work for the Ivan Rest Avenue project. Tim, if you could.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Welcome.
So we took bids last Tuesday on the Ivan Rest project. Little summary of the project is Ivan Rest Avenue from Prairie Street up to 28th Street, replacing the water main and resurfacing the rest of the road, and then spot curb repairs and ADA ramps and the normal, normal things we do. We got three bids, all pretty good bids. They were all under our estimate. Our estimate was $1,975,000. KNR, Cammingan Ruudvoots, Redlow, $1,840,000. They're a good contractor, had good luck with them in the past. We reviewed all the bids for irregularities and such, so we do recommend award to them. I've talked with them on the phone, talked with them about the bids and also the schedule. That's probably the biggest thing. We were hoping, hoping to be able to build this year. There's a chance that we might be able to build this year. They've got, they've talked with three suppliers. One of the three said maybe they can get the water main parts this year. The other two said no chance, but they won't guarantee them. So we're still in this, this odd water main part shortage. So where we've left it with KNR is they're, you know, upon award, they'll get things ordered and keep in contact with us if it is built this year. Probably wouldn't expect construction to start before, you know, mid-July, late July, maybe even into August. If they don't have all the parts by August, then we're probably going to have them push off till next year, because we don't want to take any chances of, you know, starting without fire hydrants and then, you know, not showing up in time. So that's kind of how we've, we've kind of had that preliminary conversation with KNR. So that's, I think that's really everything I had on. If anybody has any questions, take some.
Is that going to be the same look as it is right now with four lanes, or is that going to take on the two-lane look to the south?
Yeah, the three-lane look to the south, yeah, that'll be extended up to at least 28th Street.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're talking with M.D.R. right now about modifying the 28th Street intersection, extending it almost to Ivan Rest. It wouldn't quite be to Ivan Rest, but we still have to meet with them. That would take a slight modification of the signals to go through that intersection. But it is Kent Trails. Kent Trails is actually on the street in that section, so it'll be a good improvement.
Okay.
Glad you have a second question, because I have the same question.
I think, wasn't there a signal upgrade at 30th as well there?
Yeah, it's not part of this project. It's separate outside of the project, but yeah, there's a signal upgrade. I'm not sure what the schedule is on that, but.
Can we get the schedule?
Yeah.
Randy?
Just kind of thinking outside the box a little bit, has there ever been any thought of like realigning the 230th streets there so that intersection flows better?
Yes, we looked at it, Tim and I have looked at it a couple of times. We'd have to buy some right away if we came up with 30th. There's a business there, but it just wouldn't work with traffic, kind of making a loop. To come straight across from, out of the industrial park, you'd have to buy at least five houses in order to get, your angle would come out straight onto 30th, so cost-wise, it's a great difficulty.
Yeah, the other side of that parking lot is, that parking lot's there, and it takes a lot of the parking. There's really no way to shift that parking route, but yeah, yeah, similar to 40th Street, how we did that many, many years ago. Kind of stretches out quite a ways.
Any other questions? All right, so there's two actions that you're asking for, the better award to KNR and also approval of the project budget. So first, is there a motion to approve the award of the Water Main Improvement Project on Ivan Rest to the low bidder, which was Cammingan Ruudvoots, in the amount of $1,640,629.50? $1,840, I've got to fill my glasses.
So moved.
Motion and support. Any questions, comments? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlofs.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
Nordeh.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trus.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the total estimated project budget in the amount of $2,300,000, as outlined on Tim's February 8.
Some move.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions, comments? Brittany, would you, or yeah, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maringa.
Yes.
Nordeh.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Trus.
Yes.
Vanderwal.
Yes.
Gelderlofs.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Thank you. New phones?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the manager's report is approval of a new phone system. Staff was originally planning to replace the city's phone system, which was last upgraded 2015, 2016, sometime next year in the budget, so it would have been presented to the council for consideration in the upcoming budget process. However, we were notified that the cutoff date for the current phone system was going to be June, so we had to quickly mobilize and figure out a solution here. Jason and Jane both worked on this together, and I think they've come up with a really good solution that not only provides a replacement, but also maintains the transparency that we're looking for to the community, so they can understand what this is about. So Jason is here this evening. He's our IT director from the city of Walker, and he's going to go through what happened and what they're proposing that the city do to rectify it.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Jason with IT, Jeff with IP Consulting is here as well, in case you have any specific questions to him about the company. But like Dennis said, we were planning to originally budget this, and next year's budget was something we identified when we first started working with Granville, specifically the connection that you guys, and as I go through things really quick, if you have any questions or I gloss over things, please feel free to stop me. Essentially, the connection you use, AT&amp;T's been trying to push people off at one way[1794.46] Essentially, the connection you use, AT&amp;T's been trying to push people off at one way or the other for a long time, it's costly for them to maintain. So, we were looking to replace it next year, but they forced our hand by saying they're going to disconnect it in June. A couple of highlights I wanted to give is that IP Consulting, they'd be putting in a cloud-based system. We've been working with IP Consulting at Walker for about eight years. They originally came to the city through a RFP process where they installed Cisco hosted by us system in our server room. About two years ago, we started the process, we've been moving just about anything we could to the cloud up there to look at what the next version of that would be. At that time, I'd informally reviewed or talked to a couple of companies, I'd gotten a quote from them and another quote from another company. We'd selected to move forward with IP Consulting because from a technical standpoint, their solution made the most sense, we had established a relationship. They had, they had shown they can perform in the past and I had felt confident they could. We had at that time, you know, internally decided that with the due diligence that I had done and all that, we were, they were comfortable moving forward with them. So, we moved to their cloud hosted system about a year ago, went very well, we've had no problems with it, so I'm very confident in recommending them. Cost-wise, as I put on there, we're going to be combining a lot of costs in the end. Most of them will be costs that will go away in the next four to five months, some of them like AT&amp;T won't go away for about two years because there was a contract that just was signed. But one of the benefits of this is the fact that we'll be consolidating and simplifying all these various costs that are being paid right now. The other thing is currently, right now, the phone is supported on, I would say, an ad hoc basis, so timing materials as people need things. They call or don't call because they don't want to pay that extra expense with, with this system, all the support and I would, you know, consulting, everything around it is included. So there's a lot of value add here that we don't have currently. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, sorry, train of thought just right off there as I was talking, so. But, yeah, just in the end, it's going to consolidate things, it's going to make things very simple. And the other thing I was going to say is in this situation, people be kind of afraid that we're doing like a knee-jerk reaction, you know, we got this all of a sudden, this deadline, we just move forward with this company, are we going to get a system that is actually going to support us long-term? This system does have a lot of additional functionality that we don't have currently, such as the ability to answer a desk line on your cell phone or a computer. That's going to set you up for people to be able to work remotely. And also, just in day-to-day functions, like if somebody in DPW wants to be able to take a call in the field, they don't want to, want to give out their cell phone number or something like that, they could do that. And then in a disaster recovery scenario, at some point, we'll have to make policies and procedures around what we're going to do in a DR scenario and a cybersecurity response scenario. This gives us a lot of flexibility to do that, so if City Hall was down, we'd be able to receive a call from anywhere because it's cloud-based in the end. Went over costs, that's really my highlights, I could talk all night, I don't want to bore y'all to death on phone systems. You have any specific questions for me?
How long have you been using this at Walker?
So the...
Two years, you said?
The system itself is a Cisco system, we've been using the Cisco system for about eight years. For us, the only real difference, instead of having our servers in our server closet, they have servers in their server closet. So the system itself, we've been using for eight years, we've been using it in the cloud for about a year, if I remember, about a year now, so.
Okay.
JR?
Yeah, are you seeing any disruptions in IP-based phone service? I mean, I know that, you know, you scroll back the clock five years ago, it was pretty controversial whether, you know, telephone companies were going to be reliable to switch over to that. Where are we at now? I mean, it's...
I would say just about everyone's going to some sort of cloud-based system. You have a lot of different players, some, you can get a cloud-based system very cheaply month to month. If you need like two or three phones and you need to have like just a single call tree, you can get that pretty cheaply and I would say is fairly commonplace at this point. For us, you know, we have a lot bigger needs, I think that's kind of where you're saying that was the problem, is trying to figure out how to get all that stuff in the cloud. With cloud, the cloud at this point, I would say is premature, so, I guess it had disrupted a lot quite a few years ago, but at this point, I, I would almost say it's just a given at this point, so, if that makes sense. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, more or less. I mean, has Walker experienced any, you know, delays or disruptions, weather-based?
No, the other thing is that, that really enables us, is you already approved the new fiber connection for the city, so that connection is the other thing that will, does allow us to do these things. So, in the past, you had a Comcast connection, Comcast is notoriously unreliable. I wouldn't be able to sit up here and propose this if we were using that type of connection. Where now, we have a connection through US Signal, they're a very reliable local company, that's what our cloud-based system runs off from, we've had no disruptions because of that. Actually, they host almost all the servers for Walker as well, so that all goes over the same connection, almost no issues. And really, the benefit is, when there is issues on like that side, we have a local contact we can call. I can call somebody and talk to somebody in five minutes about what's going on, I can call these guys and talk to them in five minutes, see what's going on. Sometimes you work with the bigger cloud providers, it's a little bit more, you know, there's, you can't really put a face to a name, it's hard to get a contact with somebody, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question. I'm not able to access my city email on my cell phone. Best minds of City Hall have not been able to help me on this. Are you able to, to do that for me, not tonight necessarily?
Yes, more than happy to help you.
Thank you, if you'd like that. It'd make me much more responsive, yes.
And I will vouch for him because he's talked me through kind of a weird situation. I'm like, okay, you're going to have to walk me through step by step, Jason, how do I do those?
And I, I apologize if you said some ghosts before and you have, I don't know what the...
Not to you, but yeah.
More than happy to talk about that.
But I've been looking for you.
We can get that.
He's here, he's here. Okay, so is there a motion to enter into the contract, sign the quote with IP Consulting in the amount of $95,868.42 in the best, this would be in the best interest of the city? I'm not sure, Randy, should we also talk about the monthly cost or just through the motion on the, on the first?
I think you can just do this one for now.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support. To motion.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlofs?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Maybe it's for Jane, do you want a separate motion to talk about the proposed monthly cost or is that...
I don't need, I don't think we need a motion. We are still paying O and M on telephone costs, it doesn't matter who we're paying it to, it's still part of the budgeted process.
All right, thank you. All right, good. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, anything else? That's it, thank you. Yeah, it is that, okay. Time for council member comments. JR, let's start with you.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
I'm all set, thanks. I have nothing, nothing additional.
I don't either.
I have one thing, since we're talking budget and we're talking roads, and it's probably for Charlie, I don't know where things stand with this section of road in particular, but I'd like to put a bug in your ear, we really need to get some milled resurface on Prairie, about 100 yards to the east of Ivan Rest and about 100 yards to the west of Ivan Rest. Or basically between Wallace and Wentworth, it's pretty rough. I don't know where that stands on the rotation, but we got to get that done.
Prairie will be done from the, from Ivan Rest, the east city limits this year, and we also going from Prairie to Wallace, coming to the west, resurfacing that.
That's all this year?
Everything.
Perfect. Yeah, it's probably about the roughest part of town, I think, right now, and they ride it about every day. And we just got to get something fixed there, it's potholes on top of potholes on top of potholes. So, okay, thank you.
No questions or comments? Okay, good. I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight, especially those who work and